Cultivate successful passionate learners through rigor relevance in relationships. Our belief statement, successful passionate learners thrive when we champion innovative teaching and engaged learning. School and home collaborate effectively. We provide a safe, secure, and caring environment. We infuse social emotional learning into academics and culture. Diversity empowers our learning community. We prepare students to fulfill their civic duties, responsibilities. Device and way, students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, and pathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectation to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you, James. Let's look at recognitions.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Anna Mykor. If you could come forward, please, Anna. So late last school year, Anna competed in the ENCORE International Music Competition, which is based in Europe and consists of more than 500 judges who are professional musicians of various instruments. Anna was awarded third prize in the wins in percussion category for participants 18 and younger. She was among 27 others in the world, yes, I said, in the world, who qualified for a first prize, second prize, or a third prize. That's worth. You may also remember that last month, she was one of the students who earned a certificate of superior writing in the 2021 National Council of Teachers of English Achievement Awards. She has a busy schedule and couldn't attend last month, but I hear she has a plan to thank a few people along the way. So Anna, if you don't mind, just share a few words with our board.
Hello. First off, I would like to thank everybody in this room for having me here. I really feel the support and I'm very grateful to be here. I'd like to start off with thanking my band director, Mr. George. He's been my band director since freshman year, and I'm so grateful for everything he's taught me. He really helped me become the musician I am today, and I could not have done it without him. And regarding my writing accomplishment, I'd also like to thank my English teacher, Mr. Oakson. He really, his class really inspired me to grow and flourish as a writer, which has really been a major part of my success with that. Finally, I would like to thank my parents. Thank you so much for being there for me, literally since day one. You guys always support me no matter how crazy my dreams seem. And I'm feeling very, very blessed for all of your unconditional love and support. I wouldn't be the woman I am today without you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anna. We're going to take a picture over here in front of the board, if you don't mind.
We really should take pictures without masks. It's just my personal.
I'd like to have her play for us someday.
She played for the staff on opening day.
Did she?
It was really beautiful. And she told a story with it and everything. She's really talented.
Thanks, Sam. The Shackles Bears? Oh, that's it. Okay. And so do we have a public comments tonight? Any public comments?
Yes, we have one, Mr. Marshall Subak.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Marshall Subak. I reside in Wooddale. I just came here for three short comments. First one, I'd like to thank the board and Mr. Untango for allowing me to participate in the Strategic Planning 2.0. It was a, it was a very great experience and appreciate the opportunity to do that. Secondly, I'd like to thank Paul Weedeman for his many years of service on the board. It's my understanding he might not be on the board after tonight, but really appreciate your dedication to the community. You've done a lot of great things for Fenton High School, and hopefully they have a cake for you at the, at the end here. Last thing I want to talk about is the, there's been some discussions about a possible referendum. And I just want to ask the board, before you make a decision on putting a referendum on a ballot, to make sure you're asking a lot of questions and taking your time in making this decision. Right now, the Bensonville-Wooddale community is kind of at a crossroads. There's a lot of redevelopment going on right now in Mohawk Manor, Mohawk Terrace. We're losing a lot of residential homes because of redevelopment. With that redevelopment, you're going to be potentially losing students. We don't know what the student population is going to be in the next couple of years. You're also going to be gaining tax base because the price that the developers paid for the land is going to raise the assessed value, which is going to put more money into the Fenton coffers to pay for expenses. I'm not here saying the school doesn't need to be upgraded. All the students deserve state-of-the-art facilities. My oldest daughter got the benefit of the renovations that were done to the school, which were great. But those were all paid for with operating funds and with the reserve funds. The other issue with a referendum is people in the public, they're still struggling from the pandemic. It's not over yet, and a lot of people have a lot of economic hardship as a result of that. And I just ask yourself, is now the right time to put additional tax burden on the people, the residents of Wooddale and Bensonville at this time? We have higher costs coming in. We're going to have higher electric costs, gas costs, food costs. All these costs are going up, and to add one more layer of a higher tax bill on residents is going to be tough. We also have a high population in Bensonville and Wooddale that actually rents. And I can assure you, for people who rent, if their landlord's taxes go up, that gets passed through to the residents. Those residents are some of our families in Bensonville, so we're going to be hurting those same people possibly with higher rents. So I've supported every referendum for the library district, for the fire district. I don't know if I'd be on board for a Fenton referendum at this time. And this is a person who's fairly involved with the community and understands the community. So I'm just asking you to go slow. The last thing I want to remind you, a previous board of yours passed a, I believe it was a seven or five-phase plan for the redevelopment of the school. So I don't know if this is the plan you guys are talking about rekindling, or if this is a new plan, but I was at least look at that plan and see if that's still viable to do for renovations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Marshall.
And next is our informational items, and that would be James?
Yes, absolutely. We have a presenter here today to talk about our district financial audit. Mr. Martin?
Okay, I'd like to introduce Mr. Matt Barron from Lotterback and Amon, the district's auditing firm. As I mentioned in a memo in your board packet, Illinois school districts are required by state law to conduct an annual audit using governmental auditing standards. This means that an independent auditor must look at the books and records of the district and evaluate whether internal controls have been established and followed, and whether the school district has complied with the numerous regulations and grant requirements imposed by various state and federal agencies. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Matt Barron to review the audit results from the 2020-21 school year.
Thanks, Bruce. I'm Matt Barron, a partner to oversee your audit again this year. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm here to present on this 6/30/2021 audit. As far as how my presentations go, I like to keep it at a high level for us to go through. So hit the high points, but please, at any point in time, if you have any questions, please feel free to answer them as we go, or ask them as we go, and I can answer them along the way. We don't have to wait until the end of the presentation. So as far as what the audit is and what we do, we start off, we come out, we do preliminary fieldwork procedures. So during that, we do walkthroughs of your internal controls. We review your payroll, your significant internal control cycles, including payroll, student activities, cash receipts, cash dispersments, and each of those to be able to go through and assess that there's an adequate internal control framework in place. From there, if we're able to provide any recommendations, if we see any issues along the way. Second, we go through, we review during fieldwork, the numbers within your audit report to make sure that they are what they say they are. And then third, we go through a report writing phase to make sure that this audit report is in compliance with all government accounting standards. And then we come here today to present upon what our findings are. So as far as that goes, we're going to start with the audit report, and we'll walk through it. And I'll take you through the specific pages of what I find is the highlights. So a few pages in on what is called Page 1, it has the Lotterback and Amon letterhead on it. This is the opinion page. This is the main thing that you're getting from us as your auditors, is this opinion page. We gave the district a modified opinion again this year. What that modified opinion is saying is that this audit report is on a cash basis. Typical government accounting standards say for modified accrual basis, and this is what, these are on cash basis, so we have to modify our opinion for that. As far as everything else goes, there is no other modifications. And so what we are saying with that, this audit report is in compliance with all other government accounting standards. Other than that, the numbers within the report are what they say they are, and we have an adequate internal control framework in place. Flipping forward from there, two pages up to Page 4, this is the start of the management discussion and analysis. What this section is, it's the high-level narrative summary of what happened within the district during the year. I see some of us are looking at the skinny document. There's two on. This is the big, thick one, the audit report. The other one is the management letter that we'll get to next. Like I said, the MDNA is the narrative summary, so rather than flipping through all 100 pages in here, you can go in here and read at a high level what it is that happened during, at the district. And since I'm be covering that within my presentation, let's flip on past this whole section. Let's get to the actual financials at Page 16. On Page 16, this is your balance sheet for all your funds that you budget for. So when you put together the budget, this is the funds that you're looking at and caring about. As far as what we're going to look at here today, the far right-hand column are totals. Second number up from the bottom, we have a total fund balance of $27.7 million. Our main operating fund is our general fund. It's at $25.5 million. So how'd we do this year? Let's go forward to Page 18. On Page 18, far right-hand side is our totals again, third number up from the bottom. It says we have a total increase during the year of $2.6 million across all of the funds. How this happened during the year, our general fund is our main driver again. We had a total increase this year of $2.2 million. Through COVID and through what had happened during the year with remote learning, ultimately, the revenues came in a little bit higher with the taxes that came through and grants during the year to allow for slightly over budget of about $800,000 on the revenue side. Expenditures were then held under budget by about $1.2 million, resulting in this $2.2 million increase. As far as from here, our fund balance of $25.5 million, when we compare that back to our expenses, I always take out those on-behalf payments because those happen at the state or not actually controlled hereby the district. When we compare our expenditures back to our fund balance, we're at 94% of our expenses versus our fund balance. This is an adequate amount for maintaining our day-to-day operations, so a healthy fund balance as far as our day-to-day operations go here at the district. Any questions about the audit report before we talk about the management letter, anything else? So the skinnier of the documents that some of you were looking at previously, that was the management letter. So what the management letter is, this is what we include to give to the board, to management, as far as other recommendations that we identified during the audit. So how this report is typically broke up is into two parts. One being if there's any current recommendations, so it would be any new management letter comments that we provided. And then second is prior recommendations, so any past management letters that we gave last year, we want to do an update on it for this year. So as you can see, there's no current recommendation section, so we had no new management letter comments this year. As far as the past ones go, there were three that we had in the prior year, two of which have been implemented. One, funds over budget. We didn't have any funds that went over budget this year. And secondly, we had helped implement a new GASB standard, a new accounting standard into your audit report. The only one that is still outstanding is a heads-up about a new government accounting standard coming in play to next year as it relates to leases. So as you can see with that, I have no internal control recommendations, no other best practices as far as what we identified during the audit. So as, with that being said, it was a very clean audit from what we reviewed, and we had no internal control findings of which that needed to be corrected. Any questions about the audit?
Any questions, anybody?
So the only thing we have outstanding isn't effective till next year, so we'll be ready for it.
Right, and we helped implement that for you. That's our job. We consider that to be our job, is to work with Bruce to be able to implement it.
The joys of Gadsby.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just before I leave the stand, I want to thank Bruce and his whole team for all their hard work with the audit prep. It was another complete package. When we showed up, all of our questions were answered along the way in a timely manner for us to issue the report again on time this year. So I just want to commend him with all his hard work, and we really appreciate working together.
Thank you. Let's go next to the financial projection.
Good evening. So I've been asked to do an analysis of the district's financial condition. This presentation will be broken down into two parts. One is going to be a 10-year history of the district financially, and the second is going to be projections over the next five years based on work that myself and Bruce have put together. So to begin with, this graph represents total revenues, all funds in the district over the past 10 years, and total adjusted expenditures over the past 10 years, which include all expenditures other than capital expenditures that are over $700,000. Over the past 10 years, revenues in the district have grown at a rate of 1.3%. I work with many school districts in Illinois, and I could tell you that that 10-year growth rate is one of the lowest of any school district in the state. So the district has had a unique challenge because most districts have seen large growth, especially those that are dependent on state revenues because state funding has grown so significantly. You have a unique challenge of having to navigate your finances through this 10-year low-growth period. On the positive side, the district has been able to maintain expenditure growth at a level that is even below that 1.3%. So you could see that revenues have really been flat in 2021, although they were artificially low a little bit because the cost to operate school last year was a little bit less because the kids were learning virtually. You could see that your expenditures in 2021 were pretty much equal to what you were spending eight years ago. So that's also another anomaly that, you know, the, one is a bad anomaly that your revenues are low. The one is a real positive anomaly that you've been able to, despite that low revenue growth, keep your expenditure growth below that level. And this is a depiction of the revenues versus expenditures. The horizontal axis that's at zero, that's balanced budget. And you could see that for the past four years, the district has run surpluses, aggregating over the 10 years of $7.8 million. And consequently, again, despite the 1.3% growth in revenues, the district has actually been able to increase its fund balance reserves. As Matt mentioned, you've ended the fiscal year with about $27.8 million all funds in the bank. That compares to just under $25 million in 2012. So the district has done a great job of not only growing fund balances during this 10-year period of low revenue growth, but you've also used fund balance reserves to pay for a lot of capital projects. So that's quite an accomplishment. In terms of financial projections, major assumptions on the revenue side. Real estate taxes are going to grow at the rate of inflation, which we know will be 1.4% for this year's tax levy. And we're projecting inflation to be higher. Most economists think it's going to be a one-year blip, but we're projecting 4% next year, then 2% thereafter. General state aid, revenues will be flat as they always are. Basically, your state revenue and federal revenues are flat, with the exception of that you are going to be getting a couple million dollars worth of ESSER grant dollars, which are to be used for COVID-related expenditures. But the district will have expenditures to offset those revenues. In aggregate, we're projecting revenue growth to be a little bit higher than your historical trends at 2%. And that's primarily because we're anticipating the one-year blip in inflation. This is a breakdown of your ESSER grant revenues and when the money has to be spent. And most of this money is contained within Bruce's budget for this year, and it will be a part of next year's budget as well. Major expenditure assumptions on the expenditure side. Most expenditures will go back to pre-COVID levels, and that's an important thing. All school districts had lower than expected. Like the auditor said, we ended up $1.2 million or so below budget on expenditures because, you know, at the time of the budget, no one anticipated a full year or close to a full year worth of virtual learning. So those types of expenditures are going, that have been, that were suppressed are going to go back to historical levels, which will represent a large bump in the current year. Base salaries are projected to increase 3.5% over the next five years. The district is projected to receive savings from retirements over the next four years, as described in the bullet point. Employee benefits increasing 5% a year. They were 4% last year, but there's some analysts that think that that number is going to start trending up industry-wide. We have built in $400,000 annually for major capital expenditures, which would mostly be in the line of technology purchases. You'll see smaller purchases like that and minor repairs in the buildings. I talked about the ESSER dollars. Putting it all together, we're projecting expenditures to increase about 8.5% in fiscal year 2022, and then grow at an average rate of 2.5% thereafter. Continuing on the projected annual operating, the operating surplus and deficit graph, we added the five-year projection, and you could see that we are anticipating, based on those assumptions, that the district will run balanced/surplus budgets each of the next five years. Again, quite an accomplishment. If the district does accomplish that, it will be nine years consecutively that you'll have surpluses. So I would say that based on the assumptions that exist right now, the district's financial condition is going to be stable and slightly improving. And the district has proven, at least for the past 10 years, that it has the ability to remain solvent and fiscally strong on its own. It hasn't, it hasn't, it had to be on its own because it didn't get a lot of revenue growth. The only thing that I see that could buckle this future trend is something that is uncontrollable by the district, meaning something that would come from Springfield unforeseen that the district can't control in terms of a pension shift or something like that. Projected fund balances because of the slight surpluses will grow slightly to about $30 million by 2026. And again, looking at this graph, it's an incredibly stable fund balance for an entire 15-year period. So with that, I would like to see if there's any questions or...
Open up the questions, anybody? Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
We go next to our Strategic Plan 2.0.
All right. Sorry about that. As you all know, we completed our strategic plan initiative last week. And later on at this meeting, at action item, we will recommend that the board approve the strategic plan 2.0. In summary, there were a total of four meetings, three hours long. It started in September. I can't believe it's already the end of October. We got it done. There were 38 members on the committee. The committee was a cross-section of our district, which included students, staff, parents, board members, and administrators. We are sincerely grateful, I see John Aguilar over there, for the committee because the strategic plan is important. I cannot tell you how much, stress that enough. It is important. The strategic plan is our roadmap for the next three years. It outlines our district mission, belief, secret to success, greatness indicators, and goals. An action plan later on will discuss that. Again, thank you. Next slide. There's a great picture of that, of our committee. There was also names there. Was that visible, Jim? Of all the individuals? Okay, great. I did, one of my homework was to finalize the greatness indicator. If you could go back to that, Jim, right there. This was recommended to the committee, and we reviewed this, and we're going to keep it as recommended by the committee to keep these greatness indicators. Okay, so there's nothing changed there. That was my homework to present to you, to the board via Dr. Portal. Next slide. What are the next steps? The board must approve it later on this evening. That would be the recommendation from the administrators. The administrators will create action plans next semester and roll it out August 2021. So 2022, I apologize. So the administrators have a lot to work to do next semester to create those action plans and to implement it. Next up is, okay, Community Engagement Committee. As you know, we are facilitating these meetings with EOS Sullivan. The Community Engagement Committee's purpose is to help determine the pathway forward for Fenton High School. The committee will review options and make recommendations to address the district's challenges. We had one last week. Fenton administrators and EO Sullivan Consulting are facilitating these meetings. There are a total of five meetings. We had our initial meeting on October 14th. The agenda for the meeting on October 14th included introduction, a committee presentation, discussion, feedback form, which is critical, so we have something in writing from folks who, from the committee, and a tour of the building. You can, I cannot stress how important the tour of the building is for our parents, our community members to really see for their own eyes the building. Shout out to John Rosensky for attending that meeting. Next slide. Here are the names of the committee members. They are, I believe, 23, is that accurate? 23 community members there in the committee, which I think it's a great number, so we get a lot of feedback. Next one is Public Engagement Session. We had one last week as well. The purpose of the public engagement sessions is to review the challenges Fenton is facing and to discuss possible solutions. We will, we will together develop a community-driven plan for the future of Fenton. The collaboration will ensure our final plan is fair, fiscally responsible, and reflective of our wishes of our community. This was stated at that meeting, okay? There will be a total of eight public engagement meetings. The agenda for our October public engagement includes introduction, committee presentation, question and answers from the community, again, a feedback form, tour of the building, and approximately 15 people from the public attended this meeting. I see one of them here, present today. Fenton administrators and EO Sullivan also facilitated these, this meeting. Shout out to Leo Figaro. Shout out to Leo Figaro for attending. Thanks, Leo. And it's good to always have a board presence there. We cannot have more than three, because it will violate the Open Meetings Act.
More than two.
More than two, sorry. Next up is the Equity Report. Before I go, we go to any questions from the board in regards to those two meetings, the public engagement and the Community Engagement Committee. One's a committee, one is talking to the public, presenting our issues, our facility issues, and answering. Yes, Julia?
How are you getting the word out for the public engagement?
Perfect, good, great question. There was a mailing of 16,000 letters.
I think I got that.
You didn't get it?
I did.
Oh, it's a card.
It's a big card, yes.
So we got that. We also do a email blast, and we did a text blast as well.
So is it everybody, I mean, who gets that?
Every resident, including business owners.
So everybody's getting it?
Everybody got that, at least the mailing.
Okay.
Now, if they were registered, if they put into, in the public forum, their telephone or their cell numbers, then they would also get it. The target is for all of our residents.
So you said that there were 16,000 sent out and only 15 attended?
Yes, ma'am. We have three more, two more after this, so hopefully.
I want to acknowledge John too, so one of our board members attended one of the discussions this past Thursday, thank you for that. I also wanted to mention that, I think, to respond to our public comment earlier, just wanted to make sure that, you know, this is a community process. And we want to engage and raise the awareness, and then also provide voices. If anybody comes out, this is a good time to come out and actually speak and speak your opinion. So, thank you for that.
No, great point. It wasn't a kumbaya moment at the public engagement. There were folks asking really, really good questions. Leo was there, and the solution is telling the truth. These are the issues that we have here, and answer the question as best we can, and I think we've done that.
So the public engagement sessions, people can come who haven't been here before? I mean, that you're trying to draw on new people all the time, right?
Right, we had five seniors show up that I've never met before. We had a board member from another school district attend. We had a lot, parents whose kid is playing football, for example. So we have a good cross-section of the community attending.
But the committee, that's set. You're not taking anybody else on that?
Right, the committee's set.
Got it, yeah.
Next public engagement is this tomorrow, actually at, I believe, 6:00, 6:00 PM? 7:00?
7:00.
7:00, 7:00 PM. That's why I will not be able to attend Illinois Association of School Board DuPage Division Meeting tomorrow, I'll be here.
And notices are sent out, it's on the website?
Yes.
Are you doing it on different days?
We're doing it Saturdays, Sundays, Mondays, we're alternating.
Okay.
So Saturday mornings, evenings.
And then tomorrow is Thursday.
Tomorrow, tomorrow night.
Will the different newsletters, like the Bensonville newsletter, the Wooddale newsletter, also put that in their newsletter, so that those that might...
We are planning to.
Yeah.
Yep, we are planning to. The next newsletters for Bensonville and Wooddale will come out. So we did not have a meeting yet, so there's nothing really to report.
But even to put that...
Just to put the dates in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and to draw, to draw the community into the meeting.
Just because somebody might just kind of flip through that and not look, but they may read that newsletter a little more closely or whatever. Just another way of reaching them, you know?
Totally agree. Okay. Equity Report? This is a video?
Hi, everyone, I'm Mike Baragel, and this is your Equity Report. Let's start by recapping what we've missed in our month-long celebration of Hispanic heritage. Our Association of Latinx and Allied Students, also known as ALAS, and the Language Club did a fantastic job decorating our windows in the cafeteria. A big shout out goes to Mrs. Avila Peterson, Mrs. Demaro, Mrs. Rodriguez, Mrs. Vasquez, and Mrs. Ochoa for organizing the event. Our Latino Film Fest drew in a number of students who enjoyed the films Stand and Deliver, Selena, and In the Heights, with Stand and Deliver drawing the biggest crowd. Never underestimate old-school movies. La Loteria La Loteria, aka Mexican Bingo, was a big hit on October 1st during lunch periods. Our students filled rooms 302 and 304 in hopes of winning some Mexican candy and chocolate. Mrs. Trojillo, Mrs. Rodriguez, Mrs. Avila Peterson, and Mr. Rodriguez kept the game exciting with their dramatic call-outs. We concluded our celebration by focusing on cultural awareness and understanding through a documentary called Being NEA, with a student panel as a follow-up on October 19th. Equity is foundational, and at Fenton, we are focused on building these foundations from the ground up. To become more equitable, we have to educate ourselves, increase empathy towards different groups of people, and raise awareness about ways to improve as staff members, students, and as a community. The documentary highlights experiences that are often overlooked, but are very real for many people in our building. A student panel of 16 members rotated over several class periods and did a fantastic job of educating students and staff about microaggressions and describing their lived experiences as NEAs. Regardless of your cultural background, the documentary and student panel hopefully allowed all of us to take a step towards individual growth that will contribute to the betterment of Fenton High School. There are a lot of people who think of making all of these important events happen. We should be proud as an organization. The Equity Podcast Club kicked off their first lunch discussion on September 29th. The topic was around NPR'S Code Switch episode, "What Does It Mean to Be Latino? The Light-Skinned Privilege." We had a good number of staff members join us in such important conversations. On October 27th, the discussion will continue around Indigenous Peoples' Day and the rise of Indigenous voices. Thank you, Mrs. To, Mrs. Redgendron, and Mr. Mitchell, for engaging us in such meaningful conversations. Blended learning is also a great start. Currently, we have a total of 317 students who have experienced blending and are learning independently. The top three locations that students are visiting are the locker lounges, one of our new spaces, the ARC, Academic Resource Center, and our writing lab. The Asian Student Association kicked off their very first event decorating for Hindu Heritage and Filipino-American Month. The students are planning and celebrating Navrati, a Hindu festival, by hosting a dance party on October 27th, where participants can learn traditional folk dance called Dadiya Ras. On October 7th, we had a great turnout at our Bilingual Parents Outreach Program Meeting, also known as BIPAP. Mrs. Ward and Mrs. Rodriguez kicked off the meeting with information about the goals of our EL programming through the lens of state funding. After the meeting, our parents then split into the respective groups. Padres Unidos, where Mr. Castro helped parents become familiar with Power School, which is our student information system also used for attendance, and Teacher Eas', which is our grading program. The other group is our Polish Parents Club, where Mrs. Seder and Mrs. Georgakis provided information about FAFSA. The Equity Action Plan is moving along with each strand chipping away at its goals and tasks. The System Strand is finalizing its research on definitions for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and example statements developed by other organizations and school districts. Our goal is to ultimately develop our own set of definitions and statements. The Teaching and Learning Strand is diving into the culturally relevant teaching standards and developing ways to collect data about knowledge about those standards. The Strand is planning on using collected data to plan for professional learning opportunities that would increase CRTS, culturally relevant teaching standards, implementation into the curriculum. The Student Voice Climate and Culture Strand is currently focused on two tasks. The first is to continue to develop a group of student-led equity leadership team. Mr. Madal has his second meeting with a student equity team on October 19th. The second is increasing the capacity for restorative practices throughout the building. Right now, Mr. Madal is leading a committee focusing on learning about the topic and determining ways to begin providing professional learning opportunities for our staff. The Professional Learning Strand has completed a draft of a professional learning statement that will be recited at the beginning of each training session, grounding us on equity. This is similar to what we do with our district mission and vision statements at the beginning of all board meetings. The Strand is also in the process of completing a self-assessment survey for staff to determine where they are in their journey on the equity continuum. The goal is to use the data to develop professional learning opportunities based on needs. Last but not least, the Family and Community as Agency Strand leveraged our Bilingual Parents Outreach Program Meeting, BIPAP, on October 7th to gather data from parents as a form of needs assessment. Ultimately, the group plans on utilizing community locations, such as the public libraries, to host parent guardian gatherings. We have established groups in Padres Unidos and Polish Parents Club, so we leverage that to gather our data, and our hope is to expand from there. The Bensonville and Wooddale Public Library sent representatives to our BIPAP meeting, where they provided information to our parents. We plan, we plan to host our first gathering at one of the libraries in January. That sums up this month's Equity Report. Until then, enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.
Moving on to COVID updates, next slide, please. Okay, let's hold it there for a minute, Jim. Fenton continues to focus on safety and wellness. Our layered mitigation, which is, as you know, social distancing, wearing a mask, washing our hands, vaccination efforts are going, moving in the right directions. We're being consistent and safe, and we believe it's working. I strongly believe that there is a concrete sense among students, staff, parents, and community that Fenton is working overtime, meaning really, really hard to keep our school open and keep students, parents, and staff safe. Now, if we look at the slides here, as you can see, the trend in DuPage is good. COVID cases are down. Next slide, this one is, I'm gonna go back here, because I can't see. This is the different pediatrics level here. The highest one is green, I believe that is five to 14 years old, tends to be high. But you could even see with the green, the red, and the blue, the trend is downwards as well. Next slide. This one is in the case of hospitalization. How many folks are in the hospital due to COVID, it's also down. We like those trends moving forward. How about the COVID updates here at Fenton? Last three weeks, we had no cases of COVID among our students, I mean, our staff. The average for the last three weeks with students is one student. So we like those trends there as well. So we're going to keep being safe, we're going to keep following our layered mitigation and keeping folks safe, so we could make sure our school stays open. Next slide, please. Also, a quick update on last Friday. We had about 350 individuals from District 2, District 7, and District 100, as well as our taxing body staff participated in a booster shot. It was a Pfizer shot, started at 4:00, and we were out of here by 7:00 PM. ESER updates, Bruce?
Sure, this is just a picture of some furniture that we purchased with ESER dollars. It's flexible furniture that we can go around in small groups of learning going on in the classroom there. And it kind of gives you an idea of furniture and how the kids are doing well in their small groups. Working together. We chose to go forward with, just in our quest to improve air quality this year, we have individual air purifiers we purchased with ESER dollars to put in place in each classroom in the district, so we're pleased. We've pretty much launched that, I think there might be a few outstanding ones that we're waiting for, but that project has happened for the most part. We're going to put a UNIVENT in room 225, just to improve the airflow in that classroom. And then the ionization project, as we've kind of shared along here, that project is complete now, and that's throughout the whole building. And that was, all these projects were paid for with ESER dollars.
Thank you, Bruce. Next, of a student life, I asked our deans, Mr. Madal and Mr. Castro, to put together a video in regards to our students and how they're transitioning to in-person learning. It's also a video.
...some time to speak to you this evening about student life and what we're doing down here in the dean's office. I'll go first, and Mr. Castro will follow. So the first thing I wanted to talk about was how we are supporting Student Voice and encouraging it and trying to amplify it as much as possible. We've done a couple things in the past few weeks to go ahead and try to do that. The first was something that came out of our Equity Plan, and that was a Student Voice Committee that we have established. We had our first meeting, and the topic that was brought to me was the dress code. We had a lot of students who had some questions and concerns about the equity of the dress code. The meeting itself was fantastic, we had a nice turnout of about 20 people. We had some very strong conversation and arguments in the best way possible. So we will actually now be bringing this to the Discipline Committee to see if it has legs and gets any further traction. The second meeting that we had was actually with 10 what we deem to be influential seniors the Friday before the homecoming week started. Purpose of that meeting was just to talk about discussions, what homecoming actually is supposed to mean, and what it's all about, how we do it here at Fenton, and to actually just give the students a chance to ask us questions about what the possible consequences of something that they may do could be. So it ended up being a great discussion, a great meeting, and I think that it really helped us out during the homecoming week, and how well it went. Mr. Castro?
So, speaking of homecoming, yes, it was a very successful week, and I think in great part due to that open line of communication that we had with seniors. This is the second time we've done this, and it was fruitful both times. So in terms of student behavior, it was a very good week, particularly compared to previous years. The bonfire was very well-attended, our second time doing so. And in terms of the numbers, I want to say that it was almost twice as many students who participated in the bonfire this year than the first time we did it. The football game, again, behavior was very good, really no major issues. That led into the final closing for homecoming, which was the dance at White Pines. Again, pretty well-attended, they couldn't be guessed, but it was all students, all Fenton students. They needed the opportunity to be able to be free a little bit, so a nice opportunity for them to be with their friends. The only issues really that we had was more from the safety, security side in that, being that it's White Pines, the venue was open from every different angle as opposed to school, all of our doors are closed, so we know students are coming in and out. So just something for us, but again, we needed the opportunity for students to be able to get together and to let off a little steam during homecoming. So overall, very successful weekend, or week, rather.
Next up would be masks and social distancing. In terms of social distancing, we've upped our visibility and accessibility during the lunch periods, which we feel are probably the areas where we are needed most, seeing as though it is a longer period and masks could be down for extended period of time when students are eating. So that's how we are addressing the social distancing in terms of masking. Once again, it's visibility and being vigilant in terms of being consistent as to how the mask is to be worn above the nose. Whenever a teacher informs us of a mask violation via log entry, it's very important to us to be timely in our response, so we have been able to respond to all within 24 to 48 hours. Appears to be acceptable timeframe with the teachers, so we will continue along with what we've been doing for masks.
Next, there's been a drop in fights, thankfully. As you have probably heard, we had six fights this school year. Things are improving here, the school culture, the students are adjusting much better. So in the last two weeks, we've had one fight. Now, that's not necessarily something to brag about, but again, given other schools, other districts, the incident that happened at Joliet last week or the week before, we are in much better condition. That doesn't mean that we're going to let up. We still want to continue to address that, making sure that students are in control of themselves. We attribute a lot of the fights, actually probably all the fights that have happened, because they've all been one-on-one, and they've been self-contained, where it didn't lead or spill into anything else, it was just one and done. That's mostly due from what we've seen, to just a lot of impulsivity, given that students have been out for 18 months away from their first... have been out for 18 months, away from their friends, away from that socialization, and had that turn-taking, and if they want to get something done, they feel that immediate urge to address their needs at that point without some careful thinking. But all in all, drops, the fights are dropping. Again, we had one in the last two weeks, and we hope to keep them further apart as well, or even non-existent for that matter.
Lastly, we're never gonna miss a chance to talk about restorative practices and interventions. We have been utilizing them frequently this year. We are approaching probably 20 different types of interventions that we've done that are all restorative. Most recent one is probably the best example I can think of. Restorative practices this year, we had several students be found vandalizing school property. We were able to talk with those students, they all owned up to what they did. In the past, that would probably be an automatic two or three-day out-of-school suspension. In this case, we were able to be restorative, we were able to knock it down to a one-day in-school suspension, and seeing as though there was vandalism and graffiti all over the school, likely caused by these students, we were also able to come to an agreement with the students and their parents that the students will additionally help the custodians clean off the graffiti that they themselves are responsible for. So that's probably the best example I can give you of restorative practice being utilized in our school. So...
If I could just add to that also, actually, in the past, we also used to issue a citation, monetary citation with a student and the family they have to pay. And then another note, just in terms of students repairing that harm, helping the custodians, all parents were completely on board with that. And it's not something we've done in the past, but probably something we'll do more of, depending on the nature of the harm that was caused.
So, that is, that's a wrap for us. Wanted to say once again, thank you for your time, have a great night.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Madel and Mr. Castro. So far, can I pause right there? Any questions so far, whether it's COVID, whether it's student life? Just wanted to keep you guys brief, ask them to do that. I also ask Mrs. Roberts, our assistant principal, to go over the class of 2021 post-secondary plan survey. Every year, our counseling department administers a survey to seniors regarding their plans after high school. Like I said, I've asked assistant principal Eileen Roberts to prepare a video summarizing the survey data. The data is important because it provides us a picture of our students' post-secondary plans.
Good afternoon, Fenton High School. This is Eileen Roberts, the assistant principal at Fenton High School. Today, I'd like to talk to you about our senior profile and the highlights from our survey. Each year, at the end of the year, around late April, early May, we ask our students to tell us what they're doing post-secondary after they leave us, what are all the great things they're gonna do beyond the Fenton walls. This year, we're excited that 315 out of 358 completed the survey. When we talk about post-secondary, one of the options is heading off to college. Seventy-three percent of our students plan to attend either a four-year or a two-year university. We have about 37% that will attend a four-year college. Thirty-six percent will attend college of DuPage. We have 66% of our students that are first-generation college students. That's a phenomenal number of students that are now heading off to college. As we compare year to year, you can see that our survey results are up, it's an increase from last year. Last year was a difficult year, being in the pandemic and remote, and we were not able to obtain as many responses as we would have liked. Being back in person, now we are able to do so. We have 315 surveyed. As mentioned, 37% will head off to a four-year college or university, 36% will attend a community college, 4% are going into the trades, 7% into the workforce, 3% into the armed services, 66% first gen, and we had over 1.1 million in scholarships. Those are all very commendable amounts of students that are eligible for scholarships within colleges and post-secondary. Thirty-nine percent of our students received a scholarship to college. That's almost four out of every 10 kids were able to receive one. That's phenomenal. And that concludes our senior profile.
Hope that was useful.
I know in the past, they even, you guys have given a breakdown of the different colleges that the students have chosen to go to. Will we get that again this year?
We could get that, yes. That's right, yeah, we could definitely get that.
What do you mean, like four-year, three-year?
Like Northwestern, U of I.
Yeah, U of I, someone to wherever, North Central.
Right. I believe the survey has that information, I'll forward it to the board.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Now, we're gonna turn it off, turn it over to Michelle Papenikla, who's gonna talk about career pathway. Is it gonna be live or is it gonna be a video?
Well, I couldn't, I couldn't steer away from the path. I don't have a video as well. I had skills as Mr. Barago, but he did mentor me, so we got close to a circle in the corner, but it's not quite there, so we have a video for you.
Thanks, Michelle.
This is Michelle Papenikla from Fenton High School. I am the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Today, I'm with some of our Career Pathway Steering Committee members to share our work related to career readiness here at Fenton High School. This team's been meeting since about 2019 to learn about career readiness initiatives at the federal, state, and local levels, and to create Fenton's unique mission and goals related to this work. We're excited to begin our efforts towards assisting students in developing their pathways to prosperity. Our team consists of dedicated members of our Fenton staff who represent nearly every department across the building. As our work continues, we will form advisory committees that will include more stakeholder groups like parents, students, industry professionals, and other community partners. One of the first things our team did was create a mission statement to ground our work. We all agree that, at Fenton High School, every student deserves an authentic and challenging experience that is personalized to build skills for an evolving future. We also work to define what career pathways is about and what it's not about. Our work to develop career pathways builds students' awareness about high-demand, high-growth, high-wage careers. It builds their professional skills that will be essential across industry sectors, such as building relationships and collaborating. It will also ensure our students create personalized plans to grow their passions and interests through the world of work they'll see in the future. Finally, it's about building programs of study for our students that ensure rigorous and relevant learning opportunities. We also clarified what career pathways is not. It's not about a one-dimensional vocational education, it's not about tracking students into a career at 14 years old, and it's not about asking students to choose between college or career. There are several national, regional, and local organizations that share our why. Northern Illinois University has created the Educational Systems Center to help school districts and industry leaders prepare for and implement this work throughout the state of Illinois. They partner with groups like the P-20 Network at the local level and national groups like JFF, Jobs for the Future. Amy Lloyd, the Vice President of JFF, captures this why in a short video we'd like to share with you today. You may find more information about any of these organizations through the links at the end of this presentation. Let's listen to Amy Lloyd as she explains how pathways can change lives and communities.
Pathway is an opportunity for kids to start experimenting when they're young, thinking about what might I want to do when I grow up, who might I want to be, what matters to me as a person, what matters to my community, and then have them start exploring how their learning in school connects to the world beyond. Too many people from, you know, historically marginalized backgrounds are not attaining post-secondary credentials at the rates that we would like to see, and are not entering the workforce with enough credentials, knowledge, and experience to be able to launch a career that leads to economic advancement. I mean, this is about, you know, social justice with a lens on education and workforce, ensuring that all people have the ability to access the supports and services that they need to thrive in their community, of course, to earn a living wage. JFF is seeking to create structures and systems that allow people to disrupt the correlation between background and outcome. I think when we hear the word pathway, a lot of people immediately associate it with kind of old-school vocational education systems that sordid students predominantly by race and class into college versus career-ready. And instead, a pathway is a way for young people to explore their identity, learn high-level, rigorous academics in context, so it's not just about acquisition of knowledge, but application of knowledge in real-world settings, and have a continuous and seamless bridge into post-secondary education, two-year and four-year, that connects to high-growth, high-demand, ideally also high-wage career trajectory.
As we continue our work with career pathways, equity is a significant driving force in that work. We also have driving forces from our state and federal governments. There are three important governmental acts that we'd like to highlight. These acts help guide and support us in our work. The first is the Illinois Post-Secondary Workforce Readiness Act of 2016. The act takes a student-centered and competency-based approach to helping students prepare for post-secondary and career opportunities. The second is the Every Student Succeeds Act, also known as ESSA, and that's the reauthorization of the 50-year-old Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which is the nation's guiding legislation and longstanding commitment to equal educational opportunity for all students. President Obama signed the bipartisan measure into law in 2015. ESSA tasks individual states to create a plan to ensure every child is learning and on the path to college and career readiness. We'll talk about Illinois's ESSA plan in a little bit. Finally, the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act, which is also known as Perkins Five, was signed into law in 2018 by President Trump. This is a bipartisan reauthorization. Perkins Five represents a significant move to expand opportunities for every student to explore, choose, and follow career and technical education programs of study and career pathways to earn industry credentials. All three acts focus directly on the need for school programming to address career readiness, and in particular, the ESSA plan developed by the state of Illinois has the most impact on Fenton's annual accountability score. The College and Career Indicator component of this score requires students to identify a career area of interest by the end of their sophomore year. It also requires students to complete at least three career-ready indicators prior to graduation. Some of these indicators can include a career development experience, earning an industry credential, military service or ASVAB score of 31 or higher, completing a dual-credit career pathway course, completion of a program of study, attaining and maintaining consistent employment for a minimum of 12 months, consecutive summer employment, 25 hours of community service, and/or the participation in two or more organized co-curricular activities.
Hi, my name is Brian Augustine. I'm the Division Leader for STEM here at Fenton High School. The Career Pathways Steering Committee has spent time over the past couple of years defining and refining the goals related to the implementation of career pathways at Fenton High School. These goals include five areas: career programs of study, career awareness, professional competencies, personalized learning plans, and community and industry partnerships. Members of our team will spend the following few slides explaining intentions within each of our goal areas.
Hi, my name is Rich Weiss, and I'm a business education teacher here at Fenton. So the first goal area addresses career programs of study. In this area, we want to ensure that students will have access to programs of study that provide authentic experiences for students within career settings, dual-credit opportunities, and the possibility to receive industry certifications and credentials. Examples of programs of study include engineering technology, culinary nutrition, health sciences, computer and information technology, and of course, I have to say it, finance and business services.
Hi, this is Ron Janing from the Special Education Department. And our second goal area is career awareness. In this area, we want to ensure students, alongside with their families, teachers and counselors, that they build awareness, high-demand, high-growth, high-wage careers related to their interests and passions. In addition, we want them to understand the opportunities available to them to nourish those interests and passions inside and outside of school. One of the platforms we'll be using is called NEPRIS. NEPRIS will give students availability to speak with and see what professionals are doing in some of the fields right now.
Hi, everyone. This is Mike Lauterma, science teacher, and I'm here to talk to you about the third goal in Fenton's drive to implement career pathways in our district. That third goal we call professional competencies. We want to ensure that across the curriculum, students are developing proficiencies in the skills employers consider vital in nearly every industry. Some of those are skills that our teachers are already working to instill in their students: effective collaboration to achieve a goal, written and verbal communication, and critical thinking. There are also personal habits that we want to emphasize because we know they are critical to career readiness: being a self-starter, keeping a schedule and managing your time, being a reliable teammate, and knowing how to plan the steps to accomplish a task. Finally, there are professional competencies that we may now only be touching on obliquely at Fenton, but that in the future, we will want to teach deliberately as part of our career pathways. These might include technical skills involving digital media, social-emotional competencies to prepare our students to work with people from different backgrounds, and even financial literacy competencies so that our students know how to manage their incomes and make the most of the opportunities their new careers will give them.
I'm Christine Larson from the math department. Our fourth goal area is about personalized learning plans. We want to ensure all students leave with a well-developed post-secondary plan and a solid resume of college and career readiness experiences and skills.
Finally, our last goal has an impact on nearly every other goal we've set. We want to ensure we develop and maintain strong partnerships with industry professionals and community agencies to create appropriate and informed opportunities for students.
Fenton is looking to build these partnerships in the following areas: computer and information technology, manufacturing, engineering, technology and trades, health sciences and technology, human and public services, arts and communications, finance and business services, and agriculture, food, and natural resources. If you're aware of anybody who might be willing to partner with Fenton to support students in developing their career readiness, please let me know at any point. We hope this provided a brief overview of our what and why of career pathways here at Fenton High School. This slide deck provides links to the organizations mentioned in the presentation, links to the federal and state mandates introduced, as well as some of the tools being used here at Fenton to support this work. We thank you for your time and would love your feedback. If you have any questions, ideas, or concerns, please feel free to contact me by email or phone anytime. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you, Michelle. Good job. Any quick comments or questions before we move on? All right, I know we got a couple more here. It finally happened. I cannot believe that, right? After two years of delay, at least three postponement, the Illinois Association of School Administrative Global Service Project took place in the Dominican Republic approximately two weeks ago. Paul, Leo, and I represented Fenton. There were a total of seven school districts from Illinois that attended, seven superintendents, and 13 board members. It was really nice for Fenton to be there with the rest of the school district. It was an honor, and we're just continuing to put Fenton out there to be not only a state leader, but also global in a way. In summary, it was hard and fulfilling work. When I said hard work, it's physical labor. It was physical labor. The service project consisted of physical labor and an appreciation of the educational program in the Dominican Republic. We woke up at 6:30, ate breakfast at 7:30 in the morning, and got on the bus to go to work at approximately 9 o'clock. There were two major schools we worked in: Instituto de Ambiente, which is basically the institute, environmental institute, located in Araboa Coa in the middle of the Dominican Republic, basically up in the mountains. It served high school and college-age students, and they had two career tracks: forestry science and environmental management. The school focused on teaching and practicing sustainability, recycling, reusing, and reducing natural resources. Their educational school mantra is "Learning by Doing." Their educational school mantra is "learning by doing." The school sits on top of a mountain. Our focus at the school were to create a learning space for the school in the middle of the forest, or I call it the jungle. We used trees, used nails, I mean literally used nails, and used plywood, again, used plywood, to create the space. Is there a picture there? Could you go back, Jim, just to give it some credibility that we actually did work? The tools were amazing. You could see one of the guys there, I taught him how to use a machete to basically clean off a tree trunk so students can sit, learn, do their homework on. So a lot of love and labor there. Next school that we worked in is called the Dream Project. Okay, and this was located in the city of Cabarete, northern part of the D R. They have students from pre-K to high school. They have a Montessori school, they have a strong literacy program, and a strong parent outreach program. Our teams painted walls and playgrounds and repaired parts of the playground that needed some more work. Walkway, we put cement down, a garbage area that needed a ton of work, and a motorcycle parking areas for the parents. Here are some pictures there. I think that's Leo there putting some cement there. Once again, long days in the sun, but definitely very fulfilling. I will be quiet here and give a chance for Leo and Paul to chime in.
Okay, I was gonna say that when we were in the mountains, James, Paul were the leaders, and they swayed the jersey, believe me. They were the VIPs that day, and we were carrying sand and uphill, believe me, it was heartbreaking labor. It was two of us pulling that wheelbarrow. And I was impressed to get into Cabarete because that project started back in 1993. They got no schools. Ninety-three percent of the kids were not able to finish high school, not even grammar school, nothing. They were nowhere to go. And it was a dream, that's what they call a dream project. And I was, I don't wanna say, but I'm gonna say that my church, when I was ready to go, they offered some money to be donated to that school. They don't have any idea, I said, I don't have any idea where we're going to. But finally, when we get to the dream project, is when the church donated that money. It was equal, so the money that the government is giving to that dream project, $200 a year, is what they get. And believe me, they don't have any, only one project, like James said, they got Agana, Bachata Academy, Deportes Para la Vida, Dream My House, Escolita de Padres, Global Connection Groups, Luceros. There is another project, because many Dominicans, they don't have any paperwork, like a birth certificate, they don't have any IDs. So imagine people to be like 50, 60 years old, ready to retire, and they don't have the birth certificate. So it's kind of hard. The Montessori schools, and I can name it, in our last date, Thursday, when we were there, it was another group. I believe it was something called Mariposa. It was part of the dream project. So it was really exciting, like James said. It was a heartbreaking labor, believe me, guys. And Fenton was well-being represented, and Paul, James, and I was the cheerleader down there, so I don't do anything.
He was definitely more than that. Leo was not afraid to pick up the shovel or swing a hammer, and he was basically the group's translator for our journey. It was, you're too kind and humble for that. Paul, you got anything to say?
Well, yeah, just basically wanted to add that this was a great opportunity for Fenton High School to be represented along with six other school districts from Illinois. I believe this was the first post-COVID service project to the Dominican Republic. The service project, as I already said, was outlined, was reconstructing the rest area along a mountain path. And the other service project was the contributing to the Dream Project in Cabarete. A lot of labor, a lot of labor in the heat, scraping, painting, restoring playground equipment, and it wasn't, but the point is, it just wasn't the task that we were doing, but the fact that we were there and it was appreciated. You know, I think that there was just a genuine appreciation that we were there by the people at these facilities, at these schools, that we were there and concerned. It was a great outreach, and I thought very collaborative. And also, the environmental aspect, we stopped at a beach where they were replanting mangroves to restore the beach area, building artificial coral to bring sea life back, back to the area, and just a very industrious and very concerned about bringing, not only recycling, but bringing the wildlife back to certain areas. And then also the nursery, huge nursery. I think they had said they replant some 700,000 trees at this nursery every year, bringing back the lush tropical.
It was 175,000.
Yeah, yeah. And that gets replanted, it's a free program where they give it back to residences as long as they plant these trees and, you know, take care of these trees. So they were very, very involved with that. And I think that was it. It was just a very good interactive project and gave a great insight, and I thought we were very well represented in this project.
How long did you all, how long were you there?
It was a total of five days. I had to come back a little bit early. But just wanted to thank these gentlemen again. It's the money to go there to eat, to drink, all out of their pockets, all of our pockets. So, you know, you don't find too many folks like that to go to a third world country, work really heavy labor and pay for it, too. So, no, just wanted to make sure that's out there. We hope to do this again, and hopefully all of the board members will have a chance to go. I really highly recommend it. Next up is our favorite topic, FOIAs. This month, we had eight. It was the FOIA month.
Do we have a laptop update at all?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we go laptop, did I skip one? I am sorry. Jim Batson.
You can go on to the FOIAs if you want.
Sure. They're gonna FOIA why I didn't, I skipped laptops.
Yeah, this is just a quick informational item. Typically during, about during the summertime, we would come to you for a motion to approve a purchase of teacher laptops and staff laptops, administrator laptops, the computers that we use on a daily basis. This year has been sort of a challenge. We had a lot of difficulty getting units available because of supply chain issues, chip shortages, whatever it might be. And so what we wound up doing is we found a group of 20 laptops, about half of what we would normally purchase, that were available, and we had to jump on real quick. So, two things. One, we had to go ahead and send out the purchase order to get these through. But the second thing is, because it's only 20, it falls well below the threshold for board approval. But in all, you know, transparency, we wanted to make sure that you understood that we didn't forget those things, we're just purchasing them now, we're purchasing 20 now, we have a line on additional 20 to fulfill the rest of our order, and that will be coming up in a future month, maybe November, maybe early December. We're just waiting on some confirmation on when those might be shipping. So just wanted to be aware of that, that, you know, it's been a long time coming. We attempted to do these back in the spring, but the lead times were so long at that point in time, it would have gone into the fall, which, so we couldn't have purchased it in that fiscal year. So, but just to, you know, bring you up to date, we are making these purchases, and we'll keep you posted on how they go.
Thanks, Jim. Back to the FOIAs. We had eight FOIAs this month. Number one was Johnson &amp; Bell Limited. All records for construction and repair work done at our campus was requested. Next one's number two, Edgar Chides. All information regarding HVAC and air circulation improvements. Number three, the Illinois Educational Association and the National Educational Association wanted to know all non-certified staff members, not part of the Illinois Education Association affiliated with the bargaining unit and in-district subcontract companies. Number four, smart procurement. We get this every month, basically a FOIA regarding, in regards to a list of all the vendors for the quarter. Number five, Sharp Schools. All staff information was requested. Six, Local Labs COVID-19 protocols. They wanted to know how many students had COVID, how many staff had COVID. And Local Labs, again, asked for the 1619 project. And number eight, NBC5 Chicago requested if there was unclaimed funds in property that has not been reported yet. All have been resolved. Any other?
What does that mean, unclaimed funds in property?
Great, great, great question, and we looked into that, and I'm gonna let Bruce answer that question.
Those are basically stale checks, or checks that were never cashed. It's really more checks rather than property.
Oh, okay.
Bruce, is it also include fees that haven't been paid to us and folks that have not cashed their check from us?
Yeah, that's part of it as well.
Okay, we move on to the, if there's nothing else, consent agenda?
We have one more in business for you guys, right? This is your recognition from the Illinois Association of School Board recognition. If Mary could have the gifts. Leo Figueroa, Leadership Academy member. He gets a gift from the Illinois Association School Board. Patty, Master Board Member Level Two, okay? Juliet, Master Board Member Level Two as well, congratulations. Kit, Leadership Academy Member and Master Board Member Level One. And Paul Weedeman, New Master Board Member. Again, we want to thank you for all of your hard work outside of the board meetings. We know you attend these meetings outside of our Fenton, whether it's the DuPage Strand or, as well as Illinois meetings, as well as the national conference. Once again, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, regarding the consent agenda, the financial reports, treasurer's report, budget, summary report minutes, personal report, donations, do we have any questions or comments regarding this consent agenda? Okay, and so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
Second.
Mary, roll call, please.
Weedeman?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Tinkpapong?
Yes, and motion passed. Next is our discussion items. Acceptance of the 2020-2021 district financial audit. May I have a motion that the Board of Education accept the 2020-21 audited financial statements as submitted by Lauterbach and Amen, LLP?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
We have a discussion? I just wanna, I do wanna ask a question. Says, "We do not intend to imply that our audit failed to disclose commendable aspects of your system and structure." So they just didn't find anything outstanding? I mean, like, what does that statement mean? It's on this, in this little packet?
On the management.
Yeah, the management one. It's like.
Is it the $1,200?
Second, yeah, second paragraph, no, second paragraph of that, the statement, October 12 statement. "We do not intend to imply our audit failed to disclose commendable aspects."
Yeah, it's almost like a contradictory sentence, but I don't, it's inconsequential, I would say.
All right, yeah, okay. I just.
Was there any other questions on that? So based on the audit, from what I saw, they didn't see any alarms or red flags on it, everything looks in order. I think the comment was that, to Bruce's credit, it was sorted quite well and clean. The books were clean. Questions?
That's important.
Yeah, and, you know, looking back on the financial records, too, before my time here with the board, during James's tenure here, it looks like we've put ourselves in pretty good fiscal-financial position. So do we have comments on any of that? So with that, can I get a roll call?
Weedeman?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Tinkpapong?
Yes, and motion passed. Going to the estimated tax levy, questions? Okay, may I have your motion?
I think Bruce is getting ready.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll make this brief.
Next slide, Jim.
First of all, I want to apologize for delivering this live and not on videotape, so. So we're here tonight to talk about the 2021 tentative property tax levy, and I just kind of will go through the mechanics of it and then get into the specifics of what the 2021 audit, or, excuse me, levy looks like. So, can't read that fast, Jim. What is a property tax levy? The amount of money that the district asks, requests to operate for the upcoming school year. It is the primary funding source for school districts, it accounts for 80% of the Fenton's funding, and it is limited by PTEL, which is the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, or better known as the tax cap. So how is it calculated? So for 2021, and this is, would be applicable to any, you know, year that we are levying, the factors involved include the 2021 extension, so that's the beginning of the calculation. So it's the previous year's tax extension, and then plus the Consumer Price Index. And that's based on the year, December 2020, what the average was for the CPI for that particular year. So with that added on to the previous year's extension, you get your estimated extension for 2021. So how is the rate calculated? The rate, total rate, is equal to the total extended taxes divided by the district's EAV. So for 2020, the extension there, that's the actual extension, $26,866,900, divided by the actual EAV, equals assessed valuation for the district of that $1.3 billion. And that comes up with a rate of 2.0281, and you should see that on your tax bills, that is the rate that, for Fenton High School District. And then the estimated calculation for 2021 is that $27,877,025 divided by the estimated EAV. And this, the estimated EAV comes from the Addison Township Treasurer. So the projected rate is that 2.0170, so a slight dip from the previous extension year. How do we determine how much to levy? You kind of heard our financial projections this evening, our budget development for our educational programs, and our debt schedule. And there's three variables that kind of tie to the levy, the CPI, which is inflation, new property, and our debt schedule. So, how much are we levying for this year, for the 2021 levy year? We're requesting 3.89%, and that is slightly inflated due to unknown EAV, new property and the limiting rate. We know what the CPI is, but we don't know what new property is, so that's kind of a cushion or, you know, protective measure there to make sure we don't leave anything on the table, so to speak. So the estimated increase, we think, is gonna be around 2.21% based on the CPI plus $11 million in new property, and again, that comes from the Addison Township Treasurer. So the actual dollar increase is about $578,000. So just to give you an idea of the history of kind of the levies and extensions, and this is where the PTEL or tax caps comes into play, you know, you've got the levy year on the left, the CPI. You've got the levy year on the left, the CPI increases, which we're entitled to legally, the actual levy request, so that's kind of the inflated number that we, you know, put in play for protective measures. And then the final extension. So if you compare the levy request to the final extension, you'll note that the final extension is less than the levy request in every one of those cases up there. And that's pretty much how it plays out. So that's PTEL in action. We can ask for, you know, 10% increase, but PTEL is still going to control what our final extension is and our limitations on that.
PTEL?
Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. That's the tax cap. And just to kind of give you some perspective on the 2020 new construction valuation, what the district is made up of, 48% is residential, commercial is at 8.24%, and industrial is 40, almost 44%. So about 52% commercial and industrial compared to about 48% residential. And that's new property of $2,168,800. So that's an actual number from the clerk's office. So here's the actual...
We're actually seeing more in residential?
Well, it's...
Does that end to combine?
Actually, a little bit less, actually. It's about 52% commercial and industrial.
Even, that seems like an awfully high number, but that's from the township, right?
That's, yeah, that's new property. That's just new property, yeah. So, yeah, that's in our taxing district.
The industrial isn't higher with the new construction, or are they not on the bookshelf?
The 11 million isn't reflected in here, yeah. So that's our actual...
Bruce, real quick, when you talk about the new residential, does that include, you know, like flips, you know, where a home gets flipped?
That would include any new properties that are coming on the rolls, the tax rolls. So whether it's a, you know, a new home, you know, a new business, that type of thing, something coming off of a TIF, you know, new industry, whatever, that would, that would come into play there. So then the next slide is the actual comparison for 2020 in the Graybarre area there, the final 2020 tax rate, the final 2020 extension. And then the yellow highlighted column of the proposed tax levy, that's the respective funds and the total capped fund extension of that $27,132, I think it's 739, I can't really read it from here, 725, I think it is. So that comes to 3.89% increase. That's what we, I just kind of referred to. And then the other thing that would go on top of that would be the debt service levy. So that's the, that's what it would be proposed to be. That is, again, probably higher than what we're going to get, but that's just kind of to give you a perspective of what that increase would look like. And then the projected rate based on that information. And then the, all the way at the top in the right, there is the projected EAV increase based on that 3.5% increase plus the new properties factored into that EAV amount. So this just kind of gives you a ranking, maybe I shouldn't say ranking, but a comparison of EAV to tax rates across all the seven high school districts in DuPage County. So we're at number three there in terms of tax rate. And then our EAV is at $1.2 billion. I think that's what that says, $1.3 billion. So we're out of the seven, we're at number three there with our tax rate. And then our, these are just a comparison of our historical tax rates. So all the way over to the right there, the yellow column, the 2020, that 2.0281 is the projected rate. And what does that mean for a tax bill? So I put in a $300,000 home, so 33% of that, 33.3% of that EAV, less the $6,000 exemption, generates a bill of approximately $1,904. So we're about number three there when you apply that rate to a home. And this is all the same value of the home across all the taxing body, or all the school districts listed there. So we're at the third rank there based on our rate of what it looks like. So the next steps for the levy adoption, tonight we have the estimated levy that we'll ask the board to act on. The November 7th, we'll ask the board to approve the final levy. And then, of course, we'll file that with the DuPage County Clerk. Because we're under 5%, a hearing is not required. And that's kind of it overall for the levy for 2021. So any questions I can answer?
Well, that I understand, because it's kind of all, so we're asking for a percentage of the tax dollars of the, because I need to, I'm not understanding that.
Well, we have an extension that we're, with regard to taxes that are payable to the district that we request every year. So that amount, let's just say it's $20 million, it's a little bit more than that. So that extension increases incrementally each year by the CPI plus new property. So that's really what the district operates its funds on, its, you know, operations on from the tax levy. And that's, as I said, about 80% of the total funding comes from local property taxes.
Got it.
Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the tax levy? Motion to move for board approval of the 2021 estimated tax levy as presented that reflects an increase of 3.89%.
So move.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Weedeman?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes, and motion passed. Next is our strategic plan 2.0. We'll need to approve that as well. Any comments, questions on that? Comments from the experience, anything? Okay. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2022-2025, through 2025 strategic plan 2.0?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Weedeman?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Jallowich? No. Tingpo Pong?
Yes. So motion passed. And we go to the disposal surplus district property. Questions on that?
There were a lot of things that were, like, looked like they were functional, but we're still just going to recycle them?
Yes.
Instead of reselling or...
We are, we are reselling. We do have a third-party vendor that we definitely want to see if they're of value, we should get money back from that. Bruce, you want to talk about that a little bit?
It looked like there was just one thing that was going to be sold and the rest...
There were some laptops, there were some...
Yeah, most of the tech stuff, we'll dispose of that in the best manner, most profitable manner for the district, whether it's reusing, recycling, or we might get some nominal dollars for it. But I know Dr. Batson works with some vendors on, who recycle that or will purchase it from us and use it in a responsible manner. So that's, this is old outdated equipment, either functioning minimally or not functioning at all, that is taking up kind of valuable space in the district.
Dr. Batson, any comments on that?
Yeah, just real quick, I think Bruce hit all the key points there. A lot of these things are just beyond their useful life to us. And if we can get some money out of them and re, you know, purpose that money to buy new equipment. Many of the Chromebooks, you'll see, are ones that the seniors chose not to purchase this last year. Those are older ones, because we didn't really do any recycling a year ago. So there's some from the seniors from the prior year and some from the seniors this year. And there's, the way the Chromebooks work is they are only useful for so many years and then their operating system stops updating. So we have to refresh those, so. Yeah, well, I have probably six or eight different vendors. I'm going to shop these around to and I'll get the best price for what we can get out of them.
It's a nominal, it's a nominal amount of money we get back, probably, correct? Or is it...
It depends. I'm sort of expecting a little more this year, only because there's such a need for devices, especially in, you know, a lot of these things will go to third world countries. So I work with vendors that make sure that they clean them, they wipe all the data, any data that might be on them, you know, basically reset them to factory. And then they might go to Central America or somewhere in Africa or something to be reused. They still have some useful life in them. But, you know, maybe...
And we do this once a year?
I'm sorry?
We purge, we have a purging of these items once a year?
We've typically done it once a year, but we didn't last year because of the shutdown. So there's quite a bit on this list that are things that have been around for a while. You can see the storage area and the pallets and the storage, so.
On the vehicle, is that going to auction or is it DOA or is it a trade-in on a replacement?
Yeah, it doesn't run at all. It was used by our auto shop. We used to have it in our transportation, you know, fleets and now it went to our auto shop program. It's non-running. So it's a salvage company that'll, that'll pick it up and give us some money for it.
If nothing else, then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution authorizing disposal of surplus personal property?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Weedeman?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
And yes, motion passed. Approval food services agreement, comments, questions?
Bruce?
You're probably getting tired of seeing these amendments. So the last one we brought to you was in August. Last month, we talked to you about what's driving this really is the hourly rate adjustment that the board so graciously agreed to last month. Because of the timing of it, we didn't have the formal paperwork for you to review and sign off on. And because of the time, timing of it to get it to the state in a pretty quick turnaround, Mr. Ontango agreed to sign it, which is perfectly allowable legal to do. But we do want to keep the board apprised of what's happening with this amendment. And we're asking the board really to ratify what we submitted to the state last month. So really, the only change here is allowing, authorizing the district to pay a $15 an hour wage that we were ultimately going to get to, as it were, as the contract was written, but we just ramped it up that much quicker. So that's kind of what this whole amendment is about.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone have any questions or comments on that? Okay. I would say that, you know, the food services staff here work super hard and I agree with this. I feel good about this. May I have a motion that the Board of Education ratify the attached COVID-19 emergency contract amendment for school year 2021-2022 for Food Management Services dated September 16th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Weedeman?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Jallowich?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes, and motion passed again. We go on to discussion items. And this is regarding our Vice President, Paul Weedeman. We're sorry to see you go, but do you want to make a comment or anything on that, Paul?
Sure. I just wanted to let everyone know that it has been my honor and privilege to serve the students and community of Fenton High School District 100 for the past six years. The first couple of years were particularly challenging, but very rewarding and very worth it. I would like to thank past and present board members, administrators, teachers, and Superintendent Ontango in collectively making Fenton High School an innovative, safe, and empathetic center where students can pursue their passions as a springboard for further education. I am proud of the remarkable achievements these past years in all aspects of academics, student life, and making high school a center of the community, as well as a trailblazer in DuPage County in many initiatives. I will personally truly miss being a board member and the Fenton High School community and wish you all the best in your future endeavors and your board member search.
Well said, Paul.
Good luck. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. That means a lot to me. Thank you so much.
Paul, as Mary brings the gift to you from us, which you have to open, just wanted to give you a shout out and some of the accomplishments that you helped accomplish here at Fenton. You've always been student-centered. Strategic Plan 1.1 and 2.0, Equity Audit, Facility Audit, Personalized Learning, Pandemic Leadership, Vaccination Event, Balanced Budgets, Food for Families, Parent Outreach, Portrait of a Graduate, Tri-District Unity, Student Achievement, and AP District of the Year and the 2015 renovation. Once again, thank you so much for all of that. And thank you also for your leadership this last six years. We have something there for you. And we do have a cake for you as well, so...
Oh, that most important part, yeah, thank you.
Which we will not, we will eat afterwards.
Okay, let's take a look.
Oh, yeah. Oh, great. Very nice. So every Wednesday, you got to put that on. Every third Wednesday of the month. You'll be in unity with us.
All right. And the master teacher, I'm not sure what's in there. Should I open it up?
Absolutely.
It's suspense, I know. Oh, very nice. Second part of this.
Very nice.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'm sorry?
Oh, keep digging.
Oh, wait, there's more.
I just want to make also a comment on...
Oh, I see. No, thanks so much. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Just something to send you off with is, you know, I'm 100% certain that there's going to be an absence missed here at the school from your leadership and also from the community, it sounds like. I wish you and your wife and your family the best in your next journey, your next chapter. Your leadership is something that we all can learn from and the dedication it took the six years that you put into the students and everybody here at Fenton. I'm sure that everybody knows you're always going to be forever Bison, so much gratitude, Paul. Much gratitude.
Thank you, thank you so much, Kit. And again, thank you to everyone. It's been my honor and a pleasure and I really enjoyed it and really wish you all the best. Thanks again.
Just a couple of quick words, Paul. Obviously, all the accolades and everything, well deserved. Couple of things I'm going to remember about you. This is only my fourth year here, but to me, you kind of bridged the gap of, like, before I was here, and like that veteran leadership. So we could always turn to you and say how things were, where are we going? leadership, so we could always turn to you and say how things were, where are we going? And, and I think that was kind of a, a unique perspective we could say about you because you were a long-serving board member, so I, I thank you for that. But for me, even more importantly, would be your visibility. I mean, I think, you know, we'd be out there delivering food and you were always there, you and your family. We were doing immunizations and you were always there. I mean, and, and it's just, your dedication was second to none. And so for me, it's not just about doing the job here, but obviously you cared enough to be at these events consistently. And so I just want to thank you for that because it, it kind of gave us all a boost, you know, at different times when something would be going on and there was Paul and we'd have some good laughs along the way and I just think it was some good, really good times, so thank you for that.
And I would just echo that, Paul, with you being so visible and, you know, the time commitment that you've made and many of you make, or all of you, I should say, but, you know, coming to that, that's easier said than done and it's, and it is a commitment and so I admire that and as others do as well, so, but thanks for being so visible and, and a good, you know, part of everything we do here and, and being a major, you know, contributor to it, so all the best to you, Paul.
Thank you, thank you, Bruce, thank you, Sam. Appreciate it.
Yep.
And I will miss that, I will miss that.
Okay. Onto the next chapter.
Yes, onto the next. Okay, thank you.
Gosh, I got lost here. Where are we? The resolution.
Next one item is the discussion action item, there's just discussion, no action item here, in regards to 2021 Resolution Committee Report, it's back again. This will be voted in at the III, the Illinois Association of School Board delegates. There's about 859 delegate members there because there are 859 school districts in Illinois. What this resolution here is basically 23 items that are representative, your representative here, the ISAB delegate will vote on. Your homework is, this came this week, so I have not had the chance to look at it, okay? So it will be our responsibility to take a look at it. There's 23 items here, either you, our, our district is opposed to, to the proposal or for it. We will later on, after this item here, we're going to have to choose a, and a delegate because Mr. Weedman has resigned, so we're going to do that next. But once again, homework here, please read it. If there's any questions, please email me or give me a call. What we have done in the past, especially for John and Sylvia, is we have taken the recommendation, there's going to be a recommendation to oppose or adopt. We have taken the, the, the recommendation of your association, the Illinois Association of School Board, for the least, at least the five or six years I've been here as, as a group. The member, the delegate representative for our district will make that vote, will make that vote, okay? I'll stop right there. Any questions or discussions in regards to the resolution? Once again, we got it this week. Homework is to read this and if there are any questions, give me a call, but the recommendation is to follow the recommendation of your associates. Now, one more thing, please put on the lenses of Fenton, okay? Many of this resolutions are from down south, okay? Rural, rural districts. We are not a rural district. One of them, I just read real quickly, is about concealed weapons, okay? We have SRO here, okay? We have SRO there, they cannot afford an SRO. That's why their board is saying, hey, look, let's have someone like the superintendent or the principal have a concealed weapon. So that's two distinct entities, two distinct location. Once again, keep the lens of who we serve.
Okay, but so you're saying that we, we go along with what they recommend? Well, on that particular note, it says do recommend, and, but you're saying that that might not be something we want to recommend?
Correct.
So, yeah, so to be sure you look at it and-
Just really read it and it's, it's, put on the lens of our constituents.
That's absolutely right, good point. Okay, Kit, any questions on that one?
No, no, so I think the, I think you said it good, well, is looking at it from the community lens here versus the rule, so. So the next is we go to the approval of the IASB delegate.
Can I jump in that real quick? So Paul is resigning. Leo, did you confirm that his letter has been submitted and his last day would be this Friday? Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Thank you. So now we have a vacancy in, as a Illinois Association of School Board delegate. So what we need to do this evening is to choose a delegate from the remaining six board members. Here's our tradition, we've always, we've always wanted our president here at Fenton to represent Fenton High School at the Illinois Association of Delegate at the III. That has been the tradition. I'm just going to say that, that's really going to be up to your vote. You guys can leave it up for discussion.
Let's talk, so.
I'm, I'm comfortable keeping it like that.
So am I.
As am I.
I have no, no comment, yeah?
Yep.
Paul, what does that entail?
What is that? Well, that's, again, when we go through all, all, all the resolutions on that, then it's the IASB delegate that represents Fenton High School-
Sure.
-at the meeting at III. So that entails that delegate needs to go to the meeting and vote, vote according, as the board has-
Directed.
Directed, exactly.
And how often is that? How often are meetings?
It takes about, Jim, you, you're there too with yours, I think, good two hours?
Hour and a half, an hour.
Hour and a half, two hours?
Making it shorter each year.
Right.
How, how frequent? Is that once a year typically?
Right. Now, now, there has been, like last year, there was a controversial item and every, every delegate has a right to come up to the podium, speak their mind and so forth, so if there's something controversial a little more involved, it does take a little, a little longer and there's a little finagling and so forth. But it's, you're a delegate, you're representing the-
Okay.
-our school district to vote on those items. So I would say it should be under two hours.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm, I'm okay with it.
You're okay?
When does this take place? Is this at the conference? Yes, it's on Saturday of the conference. All right, so we're already at the conference anyway? We're already at the conference anyway, you might as well go, yes, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
Do you know why these are listed the way that they are?
I have no idea.
I mean, why isn't it just go one, two, three, four?
I'm sure there were six other, six other proposals that they didn't want to put in this resolution. Possibility.
Do, do we have a backup in case the delegate is sick or something? How do we do that?
You cannot get sick that day.
Or if I, I have to suck it up, okay. May have a motion that the Board of Education approve, Kit Ting Pao Pong as the new Fenton ASB delegate to replace their outgoing Vice President, Paul Weedman?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Weedman?
Yes.
Hayde?
Yes.
Gallowick?
Yep.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes.
Dramatic plot.
Suspenseful, yes. I thought it like theatrics, okay. Let's get to the committee reports. Bensonville Committee Foundation.
Bensonville Committee Foundation.
Oh, I'm sorry. We were chatting among ourselves about it.
Committee reports?
I think really the only thing that came of the meeting that, is that we're looking for people from the community that is in need of some funds to come forward and, you know, we have received a big donation from Subaru this past year and so there's a, a good amount of money there, so if there's anybody that, any organization that is in need of some funds to, to come forward and, and, and ask, ask the foundation for that. And I, and I know we, we need to sit down and talk about the AP-
Okay. That was my next question, Julia.
Yes. I think that that's probably something that we, we should do, but I just think we need a little conversation on the side, but yeah.
Thank you so much.
Anything to add? No.
The Finance Committee?
I think we covered it well in the previous meeting and this meeting, unless there's any questions that haven't already come up.
Okay. ISB delegate, that would be Paul, right, for now?
Tomorrow's new.
Yeah, I, we just voted on our new ISB delegate. New update.
Good.
Yeah. Again, at, at III, you know, the, that, that will be the next action for the ISB delegate is at III.
Did you say there's a meeting tomorrow?
Again, we have our division meeting, DuPage Division meeting tomorrow.
And, thank you, Paul. The Len meeting?
Nothing to report. Our next meeting is on Friday, the 29th.
Okay, and NetSec, please?
Leo was unable to attend last, yesterday's meeting. It was basically similar to our meeting. Main topic was the, the financial audit for NetSec.
The Board Policy Committee, we didn't have one. And DEI, we didn't have one, so nothing to report. Our next board meeting with new business, the next new scheduled regular board meeting is Wednesday, November 17th, 2021 at 7:00 PM with the tentative Board Policy Committee meeting scheduled at 6:00 prior to the regular meeting. With new business announcements, it's going to be III Conference on Friday, November 19th and Saturday, November 20th. And we've got board members attending that.
So do we-
Yep.
-we want the resolutions then before that, for the meeting? You really just write?
That's correct.
For our next board meeting?
If you could read this, you know, this week and perhaps, you know, a week before our, our board meeting, just give me a call or email.
Okay.
Thanks.
So we're going to head out to executive session. I may have a motion, a second, to go to closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body for the legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this Act 5 Illinois CS 122(c)(1) and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, according to Guidelines 5 Illinois CS 122(c)(2) and the selection of a person to fill a public office as defined in the Opening Meeting, Open Meetings Act, including a vacancy in a public office. When a public body is given power to appoint under law or ordinance or the discipline, performance, or removal of the occupant of a public office when the public body is given power to remove the occupant under law or ordinance, 5 Illinois CS 122(c)(3). Roll call, please. Or, pardon me, motion, please.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for everything he just read, because I'm not repeating it.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Weedman?
Yes.
Gallowick?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayde?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes, and motion passed and we are in closed session.
It's closed session, it's about 20 minutes. Do you want to take a little break?
Motion passed and we are into open session again, and I think I need to make a motion for us to adjourn.
So, vote.
Second.
Okay, that was Leo and Paul.
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Haid?
Yes.
Dalwick?
Yes.
Rezinski?
Yes.
Ting-Pal-Palm?
Yes, and we are adjourned. Thank you, Paul, for everything.
Thank you.